I am pleased to introduce our moderator for this evening, Cheryl Jennings. An Emmy Award winner, Cheryl anchors the 11:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. newscast on ABC, Channel 7, KGO, Monday through Friday. Additionally, she is the host of the Emmy Award-winning community fair show, Beyond the Headlines, which takes an in-depth look at issues. Cheryl is also a longtime volunteer for the San Francisco League of Women Voters, moderating many of our candidate forums, and is a past recipient of the League's Women Who Could Be President Award. We are very honored to welcome Cheryl Jennings here tonight.
Thank you so much. We're just getting, we have so many great questions from everybody. We're trying to get them consolidated so we can get them all. I am really, really honored to be here tonight with our distinguished panel of very talented candidates running for District 3 tonight. And it's always an honor for me to work with the San Francisco League of Women Voters because I love what they do. I'm a voter, please be a voter. And it's a good thing, right? And you are all here tonight because you care about this process and you care about your community. So thank you from me as a person who has to sit there and tell the news about people who don't care. It's an honor for me to be in your company because you're here and you're really stepping up to talk about the issues tonight. So you're going to be hearing from candidates from District 3 for the Board of Supervisors. Now, they're going to have a chance to present their views on issues affecting the city and District 3 and to answer your questions about those issues. To submit the questions, as you heard, you just ask a volunteer, they're handing out the little three-by-fives, and we're going to collect those questions, the final collection, in just a few minutes. Now, we do have some ground rules, but before I get to the ground rules, I want to let you know that we have two sets of groups who are recording tonight. You know about SFGov TV. Manny, Derek, and Scott are all here helping us out, and that's going to be on their YouTube channel, so thank you guys for doing that. And we also have an independent video company producing a documentary about politics and government, the Snitow &amp; Kaufman Productions. And if you want to know more about that, they're right over there, so raise your hands. Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. It's nice to have so many people who care about this process. So, ground rules. No literature, please. No campaign signs, no buttons being distributed or posted, except for "Be a Voter" in the meeting room. Candidates and their supporters are expected to be respectful of other candidates and the audience and to remain quiet during the forum, so please no shouting out. Candidates are asked to refrain from making personal attacks on individuals. No videotaping or flash photography is allowed because it's going to affect the recordings that we have for SFGov TV. So procedures. If you haven't been to one of our forums before, the candidates each have one minute to answer questions that you and the audience submit, as well as questions that have been submitted to the League of Voters website, www.sfvotes.org. Every candidate will answer every question. Any rebuttals are going to be included in the candidate's closing statement. They will not have an opening statement. I'm going to start with a question in just a moment and then go through about 15 to 20 questions. Our goal is to wrap up by 8:30 because I know you have other things to do tonight. Now, we have timekeepers in the front row. My timekeepers are, there they are, Cheryl, and I'm sorry, I didn't get your name. Okay, Rowan? All right. So what the timekeepers are going to do, they're going to hold up a yellow card to signify to the candidates they have 15 seconds remaining. And the yellow card, if you could just show it to the audience, please, 15 seconds remaining, and then a red card when it's time to stop. And the temp, and says "Time's up." Okay, that's really clear. And so we've always had really good experiences with this. Everybody's respectful of time because everybody has so many important things to say. So every aspect of the forum is going to be equally fair to all the candidates. So you have a lot of important decisions to make on November the 3rd, so this forum is an opportunity for your questions to be heard and to be answered by our wonderful candidates up here. All right. So we are going to begin. And I've been given the order in which the candidates will speak. And for the first question, it will be Julie Christensen, Wilma Pang, and then Mr. Peskin. So here's the question, and you're going to have to share the microphone. Sorry about that. We're a public entity, right? So we go with the tools we have. All right. So here's the first question, and Julie, Supervisor Christensen, you can begin. What will you do to expedite the extension of the Central Subway to North Beach and Fisherman's Wharf? What will you do to expedite the extension of the Central Subway to North Beach and Fisherman's Wharf?
Everything I can. You know, I was part of the citizens group that got the city to study the extension. The estimate is 40,000 more people a day would ride the subway if we added those two stops. What I think is most important, two things, the over 8,000 people a day that work in Fisherman's Wharf and the 10 million tourists a year who come through our neighborhoods trying to get there, a third of whom still drive. If we can take a million or 2 million car trips off our streets in the northeast neighborhoods, if we can make it easier for our residents to get to work and for the people who work in our district to come here, if we can help keep our businesses viable, remaining accessible to people who don't have to drive to get here, I think we can stay more the neighborhood we are now than what we're likely to become without that transportation. So we're taking steps now. We're actually looking at acquisition of the property. We've gotten on the lists for funding down the line, and I'm hopeful we'll all live to ride it.
Thank you, Supervisor. Ms. Pang?
Okay, well, I live in Chinatown, and right now Chinatown on Stockton Street, there's a lot of machinery parking on Stockton Street. I don't mind about this Central Subway, but I think the merchants are crying because really not helping them at this point. And I don't know whether it's going further. I'm not sure, but right now they're bucked up right in Chinatown. I hope City Hall would listen to the merchants, particularly limited English merchants on Stockton Street. It is a mess there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings, and thanks to the League for hosting this evening's debate. First of all, I was on the board and the County Transportation Commission that did Phase 1, the T-line that goes all the way from the city's border to the Caltrain station, and was on the board that authorized and planned, and most importantly, worked very closely with the community to do Phase 2, the Central Subway. What I would do is I would work with all of you to plan the next phase, to determine what the alignment should be, where it should go, what the impacts will be. But yes, ultimately, we must extend it and connect it to Fisherman's Wharf and to the F-line. All public transportation is good public transportation, but we listened to the people of Chinatown who told us that it shouldn't go down the Kearney Corridor and should go down the Stockton Corridor, so it's time for the city not to do it from the top down but from the bottom up.
All right. Thank you so much. Right now, the next order of questions is going to be Ms. Pang, Mr. Peskin, and then Supervisor Christensen. And here's the question, I'll be glad to repeat it if you wish. What is your position on issuing citations for bicyclists making the so-called Idaho Stop? So Ms. Pang, would you begin, please?
Well, you know, I've been to different, well, many countries, especially in China, you know, with tons of bicycles on the road. I support the idea having, you know, stop for bicyclists instead of let it go without stopping. So anyway, this is my view.
Thank you. We're definitely not in Idaho, and there's a huge amount of pedestrian injuries and fatalities, both with automobiles as well as with bicycles. If we are going to get to all of our dream of Vision Zero and no pedestrian fatalities or injuries, everybody's got to obey those laws. Let's be honest, this is a low priority for police. The fact that this is being discussed right now at the board is kind of the politics of politics because the police already have their hands full with other things. But having said that, I would not be in favor of the Idaho stop in San Francisco, California.
So this is a little tough one for me because I'm going to be voting on this in a few weeks, and so as a supervisor, I'm trying to keep an open mind. I've heard from a lot of people. Certainly, Vision Zero and pedestrian safety is extremely important, especially in our district, which has so many pedestrians in such crowded streets. I've certainly heard from seniors, from parents, from the ADA community about concerns about this. And I think I agree with Erin that this has kind of been generated as a tempest in a teapot. A police officer overreacted by over enforcing, and I have a fellow supervisor who I think has swung the pendulum all the other way. The matter that's before us, which actually asked to de-prioritize this by police, we're already pretty de-prioritized. I know our District 3 police captains have plenty of other things on their plate right now that they're more focused on.
All right. Thank you. So the next question, Mr. Peskin, you'll begin, then Supervisor Christensen and Ms. Pang. So here's the question. Do you support zoning in Chinatown to allow for technology and office uses?
So zoning are a set of rules that are created by communities, if they're done right, and enacted by your legislative branch of government. And the reason that we have one of the greatest Chinatowns outside of China is because we have actually passed a set of laws that do not allow the encroachment of downtown and office use into that community. And the allowance of tech office in Chinatown ultimately could jeopardize the wonderful fabric of that community. And that is why Chinatown leaders from Gordon Chin to Rose Pack to many others are very resolute that the zoning that has been put in place through extensive public participation and public dialogue remain in place and that it not be cannibalized by tech office. And hopefully Chinatown will continue to be an area for residents and visitors that is not subject to the pressures of the tech boom that is ripping so many communities apart.
So of course, we don't want to see Chinatown become the financial district or become primarily offices or see our businesses or residents thrown out. Of course not. On the other hand, Mr. Peskin mentioned governing from the top down. We do have a lot of actions and a lot of limits in our neighborhoods that did kind of come from the top down rather than from the community. We had an incident recently where two young women who each run nonprofits rented a space in Chinatown, and the Chinatown Community Development Center, who had wanted that space for their own offices, then showed up and called them tech companies and protested, and will probably get them thrown out of the space. And so that's going to wind its way out, but I think it does bring up the need to mediate these very difficult questions in a way that does respond to changes in communities over time and does it in a respectful and responsible manner. But no, we don't want to see Chinatown become tech central, although I'm not sure what tech is sometimes, but...
Ms. Pang?
Well, again, Grant Avenue especially, there were many restaurants and they're closed, and there's a 1920C, which is when 1920 women were allowed to vote. So there are two women, like Supervisor Christensen said, "I'm personally involved with 1920C and help these women, the two women," because it is a very difficult thing to say, "Well, only restaurants and business allowed in Chinatown." But there are that particular place on 950 Grant Avenue has been empty for the last 10 years and remodeled, so there are two women taking over the space. And we also have a gallery and also I practice music there. So I think it should be individual cases when it comes to high-tech moving into Chinatown. I don't think it would happen.
Thank you. All right. The order our next question's going to be handling is Supervisor Christensen, Ms. Pang, and then Mr. Peskin. So the question is, it's a follow-up question relating to business. What will you do to help small businesses remain in San Francisco?
Tough one. First, I think we need to keep our commercial corridors viable. Certainly, the businesses in our district are experiencing a lot of challenges, not only increases in rents and health insurance and the cost of goods, but the construction that's going to take place on Polk Street when we do the sewer replacement soon, or the Van S Bus Rapid Transit project are going to challenge those neighborhoods. I've been working with the Office of Economic and Workforce Development on providing assistance for businesses in Chinatown on Columbus Avenue. We're looking for street improvement projects on Polk, on Columbus, in Chinatown, to try to make sure that our commercial corridors remain viable in a place that draws visitors. As I said earlier, I think keeping our transportation available and working is a great way to keep people from, you know, heading, get people heading here instead of heading to the Mission all the time. So I do think we need to preserve those corridors. Rent control is controlled at the state level, and so that's something that would help, but it's going to be a little more challenging to achieve.
Thank you. Ms. Pang?
So anyway, since I'm an artist and, well, I've been teaching music at City College, I feel that small business could be greatly helped by, you know, having more creative arts to help them. We have some, right now, beautiful murals in Chinatown, and I personally organize musicians along Grant Avenue that helps tourists or visitors, locals alike, to go into shops. Main business in Chinatown, of course, are the small business, and because they have to, most of the owners, limited English, and the only way to do it is small business. And I try very hard to listen to them and see what their needs are. So North Beach as well as Chinatown, that is really the heart of China, of business.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peskin.
So I would start by having the government start cleaning up the streets, which are filthier today than they have been in any time that I've lived in this city. I would start by doing what LA recently did, which was declare a state of emergency and put $100 million into homelessness. And I would do what Supervisor Campos is doing, which is on our ballot, it's Proposition J., which is to give landlords of commercial businesses tax incentives if they enter into long-term lease extensions with legacy businesses.
Thank you. Our next question, Ms. Pang, you're going to begin, and then it'll be Mr. Peskin and then Supervisor Christensen. And here's the question. We've received a lot of questions from people in our audience and online, people with families. They are concerned about schools, affordable childcare, homeless people on the street. What specific thing would you do to keep families with children in San Francisco? Ms. Pang?
Okay. I think this is a chronic issue because I'm a teacher, and I've taught at grade school through college, and childcare is number one women's problem. You know, women have children, have a hard time living in San Francisco, and we are not helping to keep teachers in San Francisco. There is a problem with housing, of course. Nobody can afford to live in San Francisco now even with a big salary. So I would say women's problem is mostly younger women and childcare. And also, we have a lot of seniors, including myself, that, you know, we need, we need to have more spiritual nourishment. That's what I, I go for, that childcare and women and also monolingual, speaking Chinese.
Thank you.
So I think housing is the fundamental issue relative to families being able to stay here, and I think what the city has to do is to increase the percentage of what we call inclusionary housing, the city's requirement about how much middle-class and affordable housing developers are required to build. When I was on the board, that number was 15% onsite. Today, it's 12%. The number's actually gone down, even though we know, after looking at Proposition B of last year, that developers of large projects like Forest City at Pier 70 are willing to build upwards of 30% for middle-class and moderate-income individuals in San Francisco. That takes political will, that takes independence, that takes experience to stand up to the development community, which is making plenty of money, and they can still build housing with a higher percentage of affordable, middle-class, family housing if the politicians stand up.
So I think we all agree that housing is an issue. We're not going to be building a lot of big developments in District 3. Hopefully, we'll get to talk about housing as a separate issue and homelessness and street cleaning as separate issues because they could all take up a minute. We're working on all those things. But I think also for families, transportation's a big issue. Pedestrian safety, I hear a lot about, and we're working hard on improving some of our intersections, especially around schools. But for me, parks and libraries. I've spent the last 20 years working on Joe DiMaggio and Helen Wills and on the North Beach Library and the North Beach Pool.
Can we stop the time? So are we going to try to control audience reaction, both positive and negative?
I'd really appreciate it if you could be polite and give the same courtesy to each candidate without hissing. It's just really not, that's not polite, okay? So, yes.
And people are hissing about libraries and playgrounds. That's familiar. So I've spent 20 years, not because I'm a politician or had any intention of being one, not because I got paid for it, quite the opposite, but because the families and the seniors in our district needed a place to play and swim and read. And so I think that's done probably the most for the families in this district over the past decade or so, and I can't wait for Joe D. to open. I hope to see you all there.
Our next question, Mr. Peskin, you'll begin, and then Supervisor Christensen and then Ms. Pang. Let's talk about homelessness and what the city should be doing about it.
So I think everybody knows the numbers. In the six and a half years that I've been out of office, those numbers have increased remarkably. There are, in District 3 alone, this year over last year, a 27% increase. I salute the mayor and my former colleague Supervisor Dufti, who's now the homeless czar for a navigation center in the Mission in District 9. I think those need to be expanded geographically. I think we need to put our money where our mouth is. I spoke to this a little bit earlier. The city of Los Angeles declared a state of emergency and appropriated $100 million to address this problem. When I left office in 2009, the city's budget was $6.5 billion. Today, it is almost $9 billion. We have the resources to address this. We have the resources to have more mental health beds at the General. We have the resources to have more nurses in the shelters, and we've got to have a place for people to be during the day, not just shelters at night.
So when Mr. Peskin came out of office, the budget for homeless services had been slashed, partly due to the recession, and the numbers of homeless people rose as a result. We've gotten a lot of that funding back, but what we've seen in the city is a huge migration of homeless people. The reason we're seeing more in our district is because there are 800 fewer homeless people in the Bayview this year than last. So the number of homeless people has remained relatively static, but a lot of them are in our district that didn't used to be here before. I've got three more people from the Department of Public Health doing passes in the district, trying to connect with homeless people and connect them to services. We've got increased outreach from our police department, and I'm also wading through the thicket of services that we offer as a city to try to figure out how we can consolidate and streamline those so that we're providing better service at a lower cost. But I do agree that we need to put more money into housing, in some cases, permanent housing, for those people that can't be on our streets.
Well, seldom talk about, there is homeless people in San Francisco's Chinatown, especially they camp out of Portsmouth Square, and it's a huge problem because they stay there at night, and then that park is constantly used by seniors and families, SROs, and so they have to clear out somehow. So the cops are coming, and they chase them out. But there, even in the alleys in San Francisco Chinatown, we have homeless, monolingual Chinese, which you don't hear about it. But I do support Mayor's, the recent, what is it? Navigation Center, thank you. So we should do more in Chinatown.
Thank you. All right. Our next question, the order is going to be Supervisor Christensen, Ms. Pang, and then Mr. Peskin. And here's the question. What is your position on San Francisco as a sanctuary city?
So as Erin has tutored us, that came out of some of the Central American politics in the 1980s. We've talked a lot about sanctuary city policies recently, and I certainly think we need to clarify the communications from our sheriff's department to immigration. But I really think that all this debate about sanctuary city, at least as it relates to the shooting of poor Katie Steinle, really needs to, is really an administrative question. In a funny way, it tracks back to homelessness and to car break-in issues because there's no way that Lopez Sanchez, a probable schizophrenic with a long felony record, should have been brought to our city, only not to be prosecuted on an old case, and then released onto our streets as a homeless person with no income. And it was an auto burglary that led to the firearm being in his possession. So I think there are a lot of administrative questions that we need to answer while we debate how best to have our sheriff communicate with immigration.
I have thoughts about, you know, the police officers leaving their guns in their cars, and if it didn't happen, I mean, if there was no gun, if they lock up the guns, probably this person would not have gotten the guns to shoot. So I like, I'd like to see that immigration officers and sheriff and the federal government should work together, this problem, because they are, we are, you know, hosting a lot of Asian immigrants illegally and legally, and also the Latin, from Latin countries. So this is a very complicated question, and I would like to see more cooperation and more communication between the different agencies.
So it goes without saying that Kate Steinle's murder is a huge tragedy for this city. As Supervisor Christensen said, sanctuary city policy actually came from the days of Dianne Feinstein at the behest of, believe it or not, the Roman Catholic Archdiocese during a period of time where there was death squads in Central America and people fleeing political terror. And San Francisco and many other cities around the southwestern part of this country adopted these laws. If I were on the board, I would be convening a panel of immigration experts and criminal justice experts to inform the board and make recommendations about this very, very complicated piece of public policy that comes from a good place that may need to be updated at the dawn of the 21st century. And whether or not that, we've been told by Fox News ad infinitum that that is the cause of Kate Steinle's death, it's a little more complicated than that.
All right. Thank you. Our next question, the order is going to be Ms. Pang, Mr. Peskin, and then Supervisor Christensen. So here's the question. What steps would you have taken to improve, or would you take, to improve the in-law unit legislation, and would you support an amendment to ensure those new units were protected from becoming Airbnb hotels? Again, I'll ask the question again. What steps would you have taken to improve the in-law unit legislation, and would you support an amendment to ensure these new units were protected from becoming Airbnb hotels? Ms. Pang?
Well, first of all, I support in-laws, and as far as how, what steps to take, I think it worked out with tenants and City Hall, because this is another very hot issue right now on Airbnb, and in-law is part of it, especially we have very dense population in San Francisco Chinatown and North Beach and so on. It is something that, we have to look into it, but I would not jump to say that, well, we should be able to convert in-laws right now.
Thank you for the question, Ms. Jennings. I'm, I actually authored about a decade ago a secondary unit. I actually authored about a decade ago a secondary unit law that unfortunately, in that political time and environment, I couldn't get passed. I lost it on a six to five vote. The West Side legislators, under tremendous pressure from their constituents, didn't want in-law units. And I am delighted that my successor, David Chu, and subsequently Supervisor Christensen and Supervisor Weiner, were able to take that legislation off the shelf, improve it, and get it passed. Having said that, it makes no sense to be able to create these units and allow them to become Airbnb hotel rooms. And if I were on the board, I would have proposed and voted for an amendment that says they could not be used as short-term rentals. And I would have voted for an amendment that said that they could not be converted to condominiums because these were meant to be affordable housing by design. And I acknowledge that Supervisor Christensen was able to subject them to rent control, something that we were advised in my day we couldn't do, but it undermines that theory if they can be turned into short-term rentals.
Thank you. So first thing, we're calling these things in-law units, but actually, what I think's more likely to happen in our district is some of our big apartment buildings that have boiler rooms, maids quarters, storage space, whatever, will be able to add these units as additional apartments in existing apartment buildings. It's important. They're green because they're built inside existing buildings, they're probably more accessible, and they're going to be rent-controlled. It means that we can add potentially thousands of units of housing in our district in a dispersed fashion that doesn't put the burden of a big high-rise somewhere, anywhere in the district. I think this is great. The important thing here, I think, is that right now, under existing law, a person who owned a building and added one of these units is not allowed to rent that unit for Airbnb. It's not allowed now because only people who live in an apartment or a house are allowed to rent it short-term. And so if a landlord has an agreement with a tenant and they want to rent out their couch, that could possibly happen, but they cannot be rented out as standalone units under current law.
Thank you. Next question, we'll begin with Mr. Peskin, and then Supervisor Christensen, and then Ms. Pang. And the question is, bus stops on Market Street and soon-to-be on Van Ness require passengers to cross two lanes of traffic. What will you do to work with seniors and the disabled to make buses easier to use?
Is that, sure, you can take this from my time, but is that a question about making buses easier to use or making traffic islands easier to access?
I think you can take it anywhere you want.
So, look, relative to Market, I agree with the city's policy about getting cars off and dedicating it to public transit. I think it makes an immense amount of sense. Hopefully, the city will stand up to the TNC companies and not turn Market into an Uber thoroughfare and use other corridors for that use. But as to traffic light timing, it's all about making sure that you have adequate timing for crosswalk signals. And if people are saying that there's not adequate timing, let me know or let the MTA know, those can be adjusted.
So good news, we have a list right now. Last time I counted, we had about four dozen projects on it of changes that we're making in the district to try to improve pedestrian safety. So there's going to be a great new crosswalk at Mason and Broadway in front of Lady Shaw. It's almost finished. We've had the MTA adjust the timing to increase crossing times at California, at Bay Street. So we're working on a lot of those things. If you know intersections you'd like us to work on, let us know. Other good news is we have a lot of new buses coming online. Not only are they more energy-efficient and cleaner-running, but they're much easier to board, they're much easier to walk around. We've actually, they're on some of the lines here in the district, so you should start seeing those. So I think that's one of the happy things, is that we are making some improvements. Some of you probably noticed there's some bulbouts and some signal changes that are planned for Columbus Avenue that are designed also to try to improve pedestrian safety on that street.
Well, for seniors, crossing street is something very difficult times. So I would say adjust the signals to allow more time for seniors to cross the street. And as far as Market Street, the more traffic, I really like the idea of having Market Street as the way it is because allow, allow less traffic will have better time to cross the street.
Thank you. All right. The next order is going to be Supervisor Christensen, Ms. Pang, and then Mr. Peskin. And this has to do with City College of San Francisco. What will you do to help City College of San Francisco as it goes through its problems with accreditation to keep it open and viable to everyone who wants to attend? So for those of you who don't know, it was stripped of its accreditation in 2013, then granted restoration, and it's got two years to come into compliance. So we'll begin with Supervisor Christensen.
We can vote Alex Randolph onto the City College Board. I mean, certainly, the City College Board is working very hard to improve the situation at City College. I think we all know how important it is. Many of us are aware of some of the struggles that took place when City College tried to expand to Chinatown, and there was, there was a lot of controversy about where it was going to be placed. We now have a split facility for that college instead of a single building. It suffered somewhat from that. We did save the Colombo Building, but I think City College kind of took it in the shorts for that. But I have been pleased to see reports coming through that shows that things have stabilized financially and that it is likely that the college will pull out of this in one piece. And I'm glad for some of the new leadership there that has put it on a better track.
Well, I've taught City College, especially Ocean Campus. It is a constant struggle, and I know, I see a lot of teachers, we are so frustrated with this accreditation. So I like to see that City College will have an easier time getting through this crisis. It is really demoralizing, we, teachers and students. So it is very, very hard, you know, I just cannot say how much it really affects the faculty and students.
So first of all, I would commend our city attorney, Dennis Herrera, who sued the Accreditation Commission and prevailed, and I would make sure that our city attorney has sufficient resources. Second of all, I would do what I did, which is champion Proposition A to give them sufficient funding to deal with some of the things, including huge overspendings in all sorts of instances, back to the days when they wanted to knock down 53 Columbus and One Columbus Avenue and displace 24 units of family housing on that street when City College was making mistakes in those days. And finally, I would vote for the person who's been endorsed by AFT 2121, the Faculty Union of City College, and that would be my candidacy.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Our next question, and the order is going to be Ms. Pang, Mr. Peskin, and Supervisor Christensen. Some people have expressed concern about San Francisco becoming an amusement park with so many tour buses, Segway tours, and all sorts of other ways, those little cars that go around. So do you have any thoughts and comments about that? So we'll begin with Ms. Pang.
Don't forget, San Francisco's number-one industry is tourism. We may not like the buses, but we hear chink-chink, there's money coming in. So I really have a lot of ideas about how to have a greener industry. Tourism is number one, $7 billion. And I pioneered musicians on Grant Avenue and Portsmouth Square. It attracts tourists, you know, to stay and go into the shops. It only is very little, little, but I think it is something that, don't forget, in the 1950s, we have beatniks, we have the arts. We have so much rich culture, so much tradition in San Francisco's multicultural communities that we should look into it and see if we can boost tourism by promoting the arts, the green industry.
The Disneyland that I'm worried about, and I think all of us are worried about, isn't about Segways or Fisherman's Wharf. It's about losing our artists, it's about what Wilma just said, it's about losing our cultural diversity, our economic diversity. It is about the increased evictions in this district, it is about the loss of artists. I would champion the requirement that in new developments, a modicum of space is required for nonprofits and for artists. It is high time that San Francisco lead in that direction. It is high time that we protect the people who make this such a vibrant community. I'm worried about this becoming a Disneyland where everybody is just super-rich and all of the people that make this such an interesting place to live in are forced out.
So I'm going to try to stick to answering the questions. So how can we modulate the tourists that come to our district? Because I do hear about this a lot. As I said earlier, I think if we provide better public transportation and try to reduce the auto trips and the bus trips, that's better for us. I think we need to control the buses more. My predecessor Supervisor Chu took some steps in that direction. We've been investigating taking further steps to try to keep the buses off of some of our smaller residential streets. Safety, not only for us but for them. We have a new ambassador program that's taking place at the foot of Lombard Street that has people there during the day to try to help keep people out of the roadway and to remind them to take care of their valuables. We've got pilot programs going up to remind people not to leave valuables in their car. That's one of the things that's driving up the auto burglaries. As far as for our nonprofits, we are looking at adding nonprofit space in some of the new affordable housing that's being built in the district. And my time is up.
Thank you. All right. Well, let's talk about housing for our next question, and I'll explain why. We're going to begin with Mr. Peskin and Supervisor, and then Ms. Pang. So two things, maybe too much. So we'll just start with one. Please explain for and against what you have been doing to prevent Ellis Act evictions. Please explain for and against what you've been doing to prevent Ellis Act evictions.
So I think people know my track record on, in my eight years in office, I passed some 205 pieces of legislation. About a dozen of them were aimed at protecting tenants, including a piece of rather seminal legislation aimed at speculators around the Ellis Act that said that if you use an Ellis Act eviction, you would not be eligible to condo your property for a period of 10 years. And in the next year, that saw a large reduction in the number of Ellis Act evictions. But I think we have a lot more to do, and we just saw that this board finally, and I commend Supervisor Christensen for voting for it. The big new form of evictions is nuisance evictions, where people are being evicted for literally hanging laundry out windows. And then let me just say, my record on tenants' rights precedes my time in office, during my time in office, and since I left office, I have helped to save literally thousands of people from eviction.
So I think the challenge we face is that despite Mr. Peskin's valiant efforts, we're still seeing people evicted, and it's still happening. Even Prop G, which was hotly debated a couple cycles ago, had so many loopholes in it that the most egregious evictions that I've been seeing as supervisor would still have been allowed. What we're facing is a climate where we have a lot of aging property owners in our district, and we're seeing enormous pressure from economic forces, and it makes it really hard. I support rent control, of course. I have been able, as supervisor so far, to stop 25 illegal evictions and three lockouts of tenants. So we're doing our best to help those people that we can. I passed a resolution at the board supporting Ellis Act reform at the state. We haven't succeeded in doing that yet. I think we need to continue working for tenants' rights, but we also have to find ways to build more housing and to try to protect our small property owners so that these units remain available.
The word eviction is very personal to me. Well, I lived on campus, San Francisco State University, in the '70s, and they decided to tear down the housing and to build, extend the parking lot so we're evicted. And we did fight a long, nasty battle to save that housing. Didn't work. So then I moved into another place on Franklin and Union. And the building, after five years of living there, sold, so again, got pushed out. And now, for the last 35 years, I've been living in Chinatown. And I was on the brink of another, the last eviction, but somehow, I fought it with the rent board. So when the word comes to eviction, that it's very personal to me.
Thank you. All right. Next question. And the order is going to be Supervisor Christensen, Ms. Pang, and then Mr. Peskin. The neighborhood clubhouse seems to be rented out frequently instead of being available for neighborhood young people to use with a city recreation worker. I hope I'm reading this right. What would you do to limit privatizing the clubhouse? Begin with Ms. Christensen.
So I don't know which clubhouse specifically the person who wrote the question is asking about, but I've got good news about two of our clubhouses. I was able to put money in the budget this year for a rec director at Joe DiMaggio when the playground reopens, and we were able to provide funding for a community group who manages the Willie Woo Wong Playground to be funded fully this year so that that playground will be open continuous and long hours. So the decision to take our rec directors out of the clubhouses is one that's not very, I'm not very fond of. But I will say that there are occasions when it works well. The Telhi Co-op, for example, is now operating out of the Wohei Yuan Clubhouse in Chinatown, and it's been a great use of that space, very active. So I think, again, one-on-one, we're going to take our clubhouses and see what we can do, but the good news is that two of our main facilities in North Beach and Chinatown will be fully staffed for the coming year, and I'm so glad.
Talking about Portsmouth Square, it's, it is a living room for seniors and people with certain illness, I wouldn't say mental illness. They hang out there, and they live, most of them live around, around that area from SROs. So it is, we should put more money and maybe find another space for Chinese, monolingual seniors to be able to hang out. So I really like the idea, if you can have an increased budget for the parks.
It's the best of times and the worst of times relative to Reckon Park. I think all of you know that under this administration, the arboretum is now charging. Under the last administration, they actually wanted to propose a fee to get into Coit Tower to see those murals that are part of all of our patrimony that were done during the WPA era. There has been privatization of clubhouses all across the city. I think that there needs to be bold leadership on the Board of Supervisors that's willing to be a check and balance, that does not want to privatize and monetize our parks, and is willing to propose a dedicated stream of income so that we're not just building new facilities, but we actually have the money to operate them and so that we actually have rec directors. There are actually less rec directors today than when I was in office, true fact.
Thank you. You've all talked about housing a little bit in all of your remarks, and I know you want to talk about that, so we have a lot of questions about affordable housing. So beginning, the order is Ms. Pang, Mr. Peskin, and Supervisor Christensen. Affordable housing, what would you do to create more affordable housing in San Francisco? Ms. Pang.
Well, talking specifically in District 3, we have one lot that is called Kirkland Bus, you know, the park where the buses across Safeway, that could be used for, to build affordable housing. And there's also the Hancock School, where when the community college moved to Kearney Street, that could be considered to build affordable housing for families. And there are other options, but I can see that with as tight spaces, tight as District 3, the Kirkland Bus Yard could be used to build housing.
So I agree with Wilma Pang, certainly utilizing public sites. That's on the ballot this November, Proposition K. And whether it's the Kirkland Bus Yard, whether it's the Balboa Reservoir, John Hancock Elementary School, but let's go back to what I talked about earlier. We need to increase the inclusionary onsite requirement that developers are required to build for middle-class and lower-income housing onsite. That should be an obligation. And in addition to that, we And in addition to that, we have to hang on to the housing stock that we have. Did everybody see the report two days ago? The Academy of Art or the Academy of Real Estate, as I like to call them, has gobbled up hundreds of units in this district in violation of the law. City Hall has not had the will to enforce it. Harvey Rose, the city's budget analyst, says that some 2,000 units of rent-controlled housing have been taken off the market because of Airbnb. Almost no enforcement by City Hall. So we've got to preserve the housing that we've got. We've got to build new housing, and we've got to hold developers' feet to the fire to pay for it.
So I won't disagree with any of that. So, one, we're building affordable housing in our district. There's a new project going up at 88 Broadway. I'd like to acquire the Pocota site for senior housing, which we did get senior housing added to the Broadway site. We are looking at other sites in the district that would be suitable for affordable housing going forward. We've got a couple of properties that we're looking at acquiring so that we can make sure that they remain affordable housing. We are talking to the few private developers that are building in the district. I agree that we need to be doing way, way better than 12%. And fortunately, we are seeing developers willing to do more below-market rate units. I agree absolutely that we need to control short-term rentals, but one of the biggest areas I'm focusing on is ways to try to incentivize property owners who have units off the market to rent those units out. And we have some programs that we're going through legal strategy on right now to try to see if we can get some of those units back on the market, because they far outnumber any of the other gaps that we've been able to find, except maybe the Academy of Art. Thank you. There are so many pressing issues in the city of San Francisco, and everybody here is so passionate about everything. Where does, here's the order, Mr. Peskin, Supervisor Christensen, and Ms. Pang. And if you could please silence your phone, that would really help and not interrupt the candidates. Got it? Is it off? Okay. I didn't want to run against anybody's clock. Hey, you might want to help her there. Thank you. All right, so here's the question. Where does crime rank on your priority list? We have housing, we have so many other things to think about, and transportation. So where does crime rank on your priority list? So we'll begin with Mr. Peskin.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings. So...
Okay, stop the clock, please. I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. No, just turn the bell off. Somebody help her. Hold on a second. I could help you. You don't have to leave. Oh, you got some help? Oh, that's one of those phones. You can't even see the dial on that. Yeah, 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 a flip phone, huh? Can you help her, can you help her out? We don't want you to leave, honey. We don't want you to leave or not stop, stay with us, okay? All right? I'm so sorry.
No problem.
I don't want to cut into anybody's time, because what you have to say is too important. Just power it down. We haven't even talked about technology yet, right? Okay, my apologies.
No, how many newscasters does it take to...
To stop a phone, I know, right? Okay, all right, we'll begin again. All right, so the question is, where does crime rank on the priority list? And Mr. Peskin.
So obviously, one of the paramount responsibilities of a government, be it on the legislative side or the executive side, be you the mayor, or the president, or the Congress, or the Board of Supervisors, is the safety and quality of life of your residents and your citizens and your electorate. So it's a very, very high priority. Having said that, crime in San Francisco is pretty good. Having said that, there, and Supervisor Christensen and Wilma Pang and I have been on the road together, this is our fifth or sixth time, we all know the numbers. Very, very high elevated increase in car break-ins as well as some violent crime, and it is the responsibility of the PD and it's the responsibility of the board to make sure that they have sufficient resources to do their job. It was very interesting, if you read the Chronicle article, to see that we actually are a little bit higher than other cities on crime, although our staffing, our police staffing is much higher, and that talks about accountability of the police. And I think, again, you have to have somebody who's independent, who's willing to hold the police department accountable.
Right. Supervisor? So our, our police District 3 just got expanded to include Market Street and Mission, and calls went up 1,100 a month. And we had a vote at the Board of Supervisors about whether to bring our police staffing to the minimum that was set decades ago when our population was tens of thousands of people less. The vote was six to five to increase the police force. I voted yes. The five supervisors that support Aaron all voted no. I agree we need jobs, we need mental health services, we need a lot of things, but what Captain Lazar needs is some policemen on the street trying to stop auto burglaries, trying to stop property crime. So we're going to try to get those officers. I'm excited about the new people in the force because they're young, they're culturally trained, they're bilingual, and I think they can make a real difference. So I think it's important that we have, that we have an adequately-staffed police force. We also need a new police station. Back since Mr. Peskin was in office, we've needed to renovate Central, and we haven't done it. I'm going to get it done.
Well, I also consider crime as a priority. In Chinatown now, it seems like the police is working a little more with directly with the residents, whereas before, when we have seniors there afraid to go to the police. And I think through monthly meeting every Tuesday, the first Tuesday of the month, that Captain Lazar and through an interpreter, he really tried to reach out to the community. And there are more bilingual cops to patrol the Pingyon area, because that is right now a hotspot, because a lot of the robberies and assault come from that particular area. I really hope that more seniors would be able to come out and reach to the police department.
Thank you. And just a reminder, we'd appreciate it if everyone refrains from any personal attacks against another candidate. All right, our next question is, the order will be Supervisor Christensen, Ms. Pang, and then Mr. Peskin. And this is, this is about a recent news event. Arnold Heights recently had an electrical explosion that injured residents, and residents in the area have reported other electrical box fires. What can you do to protect public safety from such incidents? Ms. Christensen? Make sure PG&E does a better job of inspecting those boxes. Yeah, I mean, we've had those explosions in the financial district as well. I think all of us, you know, you watched what happened down south of here, and we have very old infrastructure. A lot of it hasn't been inspected properly. And I think we're trying to put the screws to the utility company to make sure that it does what it needs to do to keep us all safe. I've also heard a lot from residents about the new cell phone transmitters, even about the coils of communication cable that are on our utility lines. We are stymied once again, just as with evictions, by some of the laws at state level, and I've been working with Assembly Member Chu to try to address some of those and see if we can make some headway. But basically, you know, we're, we're living in a city that's aging in many ways, and proper inspection and proper maintenance of all of our infrastructure is really essential to our safety.
Well, that is quite not so much a problem in Chinatown on the surface, but the transformers, I think I heard maybe one or two explosions, that we should work, PG&E should work closely with the merchants and inspect them frequently and also to guide them that their safety rules, you know, from the merchant's point. But also, PG&E should be responsible to really put the transformers a lot more safe.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings. So I have long held the belief, and I have stated it publicly and supported it repeatedly, that the people of San Francisco should relieve PG&E of its facilities in this town. And that, and that's not political rhetoric. I believe that San Francisco should municipalize PG&E's facilities. That was referred to as public power. It almost won by a fistful, it lost by a fistful of votes after PG&E spent almost as much money as Airbnb is spending today to defeat Proposition F, and that was over a decade ago. But I believe that we should kick PG&E out. We've shown that we know how to run our water system. We've shown that we know how to run our sewer system. I believe that we can have public power in San Francisco. We can actually take those transformers and fix them and do the job that PG&E failed to do in San Bruno and has failed to do in San Francisco.
But only after they fix it. I'm sorry? Okay, all right. So our next question is, the order in which you'll speak would be Ms. Pang, Mr. Peskin, and Supervisor Christensen. District 3 has a program to add density but no plan to add fire stations. What will you do to keep fire stations, police, and other first responders at an appropriate level for the growing population in District 3? Ms. Pang?
Well, I live pretty close to the fire station on Powell between Broadway and Pacific, and I guess, right now Chinatown has one police fire station. I, I'm not sure, there are others, like North Beach, so I'm not familiar with, so I, I tend to think that it's, right now Chinatown is appropriate to have one right now, but although it could be, if there's another one, that'd be even better for the density of the population.
Thank you. So there's been extensive study on this going back for decades. District 3 and the city is adequately served even with increasing population density. Station 13 is the high-pressure station for downtown. We've got 28, we've got two-truck, two-engine, 41-engine. District 3 has very, very good coverage by, by our fire department, and they do a great job, and I would not foresee opening any new fire stations in the third supervisory district.
Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Peskin. I think we've got our fire stations covered. As I mentioned earlier, what we don't have covered is our police station. I don't know if any of you have been in Central Station. They can't even book people there because the cells don't meet regulation. The detectives are piled one on top of each other. So I've been working with the city to try to move the detectives into an adjacent commercial space so that they've got enough room to do their job, and we're looking at trying to renovate the existing holding cells so at least the police don't have to take people down to 850 Bryant just to book them. But I'm also looking long-term to try to figure out how we build a new station. Unfortunately, the land that was allocated for that purpose, well, it's not unfortunate that it's affordable housing, but we have affordable housing instead of a police station when we need both of them, so we're going to need to figure that out. I think we also need to try to figure out how to keep our first responders living in the city, and we're looking at some housing programs that might help to do that, because we want them here if there's an emergency. Thank you. We're up to our last three questions, and then at the end of this, the candidates will each have two minutes to give their concluding remarks. I just want to let you know, you'll have a chance to wrap up anything that you didn't get to say here. So our next question, Mr. Peskin, you'll begin, Supervisor Christensen, and then Ms. Pang. And the question is, we've talked so much about affordable housing. How can you, and we're here in a school, how can you help teachers, nurses, public safety workers obtain affordable housing? Is there anything that could be done to help them?
Yeah, I think because of my track record in and around affordable housing and my commitment and my willingness to stand up to the development community and negotiate tough deals is precisely why I am the candidate in this race who's endorsed by the California Nurses Association, by the United Educators of San Francisco, by the City College Faculty Union, AFT 2121, by the Hotel and Restaurant Workers Union, Local 2, the Service Employees International Union. These are actually the people who populate this district and this city, who believe in this candidacy based on my experience and my track record and the kind of policy commitments that I've spoken with you all about this evening.
So I'm sorry, can you, can you repeat the question? How can you help teachers, nurses, and public safety workers obtain affordable housing? So I think the first thing we can do is build more housing. We've got, we've got a population graph that's been doing this for 20 years, and our housing construction has been doing this. Doing that in a way that does not disrupt our neighborhoods is very important, but the fact is, we need more housing in order to try to meet that gap between the number of people that are here and the available housing. I have, I have something with the city attorney this week where we have an idea where we can provide housing for our teachers, our nurses, our first responders. I'm hoping that that will move forward and allow us to do something again without neighborhood disruption that would help provide more housing for these people. So what else can I say? I have a long list of supporters, but I think, so we build more housing, we build more affordable housing, which we're doing, we protect our existing housing, but the idea of prioritizing housing for our first responders and for our teachers is something that I think is very popular at City Hall right now. Thank you.
Well, the city has a program called Section 8 for Low-Income Subsidized Housing. How about subsidizing teachers, give priority to teachers and nurses so that they can stay in the city? Because city, the city does not right now, you know, help teachers, and I know firsthand, but in order to keep teachers there, we need to, I would say, probably like Section 8, having gradual, federal fund to, to fund subsidizing the teachers and the nurses and city workers.
All right, thank you. Question now, the order for our speakers, Supervisor Christensen, Ms. Pang, and then Mr. Peskin. The question is, do you have any proposals to switch to more renewable energy? Yes. I was happy to be a co-sponsor of one of the ballot measures that's on this year that helps, helps us toward that end by defining what constitutes clean power. I do support clean power in San Francisco and the move to that end. We've got a number of programs underway that support energy efficiency. As I mentioned, we've got cleaner-running buses that are going to require less maintenance that are currently coming online. So I think as a city, we're, what is it, 17% beyond, below the Kyoto protocols, we've been doing a good job as a city in making our buildings energy-efficient, making our vehicles energy-efficient, and I support heading further in that direction. We're, we've taken steps to try to make our new construction even better, reusing water, for example, better water management in some of our areas that are being newly developed. So I've been proud to support those measures that have gone through the board recently and look forward to doing more.
Well, not to be redundant, and that was precisely a support, clean energy.
All right, thank you. Mr. Peskin?
Thank you, Ms. Jennings. I think we're all on the same page on that. I had one of the largest political battles in my eight years in office with Pacific Gas and Electric over the closing of the Bayview Hunters Point fossil fuel plant. Subsequently, working with Supervisor Sophie Maxwell, we were able to close the Morant Plant at Petronero Hill. That is an area of town that had the highest elevated asthma rates in the city, but I think we all support clean power, and not to go back to the endorsement thing, but I'm delighted to have the endorsement of the Sierra Club because of that track record and because of that commitment to standing up to organizations like PG&E, which, as you may recall, the mayor has, the day after San Bruno blew up, the mayor called them a great corporate citizen. That's not exactly standing up, and that's why we have to have real, independent voices on the Board of Supervisors.
All right, it's getting late. This is our final question, and the order is going to be Ms. Pang, Mr. Peskin, and Supervisor Christensen. And we've talked about housing, and this is a real contentious issue, all the new technology companies that are coming to San Francisco. So would you support bringing more technology businesses to San Francisco? Mr. Peskin, Ms. Christensen, and Mr. Pang, Ms. Pang, I'm sorry.
Mr. Peskin, Ms. Christensen, and Mr. Pang, Ms. Pang, I'm sorry.[1095.76][1095.76](CROWD HUMMING). I'm sorry, you're right, you're right, you're right. I just changed the order there. Ms. Pang, I apologize, you begin, and then Mr. Peskin.
Oh, okay. Now, I lost track of the question.
The question is, would you support bringing more technology businesses to San Francisco?
Well, I am an advocate of tourism, so that's a green industry. I don't see why having tech industry is not a good idea. I think it's a good idea, but we have to really look into our number-one industry. It's green industry, and I would support first tourism, and then if tech company coming in, I'd rather say, let's, I really have to sort of think about this one, but I really support tourism as number one, and we have a lot of room to develop and to promote tourism.
Mr. Peskin, thank you.
So I think it's important that San Francisco have a diversified economy, not put all of its eggs in one basket. But I think the role of the Board of Supervisors at this moment in time is to deal with the huge income disparities that we have, to make sure that as folks are coming in, that they're paying their fair share, and they're paying their way, and they're not getting tax breaks as they cause impacts. And I think part of the reason I'm running for the Board of Supervisors is not to encourage or discourage, but to mitigate those impacts and make sure that people pay their fair share, make sure that the tech companies are having, are paying impact fees for the transportation issues that are happening and are legion in this town, that they're paying their fair share relative to affordable housing. And right now, that political will is sadly absent at City Hall.[1214.42][1214.42](APPLAUSE).
So I came to San Francisco in the late '70s. The employment titans back then were big construction companies like Bechtel and big banks like Wells Fargo and the Bank of America. They supported our symphony and our opera, but they bought a lot of change to the city. Today, we use tech as a euphemism for everything we don't like about what's changing. I think to a lot of people, it means 20-somethings that make way too much money and really don't care about the rest of us. But I think it's challenging to define what a technology company is. I mean, we use it to reference Airbnb and Uber and people who do things that we don't like. But pretty much every company coming into San Francisco uses computers these days, and the largest employers, the people that have brought the most new employees to San Francisco in the last five years, has been the healthcare industry, our hospitals, and our biotechnology centers. So I think we do need to make these new companies pull their fair share. I absolutely agree with that. But the tax breaks for mid-market revitalized it. Those alone are not the cause of the problems today.[1285.83][1285.83](APPLAUSE).
Right now, we come to the time in the program where the candidates will have two minutes for a closing statement. Before we get to that, though, just want to remind you that if you have not registered to vote, somebody outside will help you do that right away. It only takes a minute. And the deadline to register is October 19th. If you moved, you have to r-register at your new address. So we're going to do the closing statements in reverse alphabetical order. So I've got to figure this out, right? All right.
It's pretty easy.
That's right. I got three names, right? Okay.[1325.21][1325.21](CROWD HUMMING). I know it does.
By our first or last names.
Well, no, no, we could do ladies first.[1334.33][1334.33](LAUGHING) All right. So let's start with Ms. Pang because you are the PA and PE, right?
Oh.
Yeah, go ahead. So you get two minutes to make your case.
Well, thank you, Cheryl. And I'm honored to be here, to be able to speak to you. And I've come from so-called the ghetto, Chinatown. I've lived in Chinatown for the last 35 years, and because of that, I know what the needs and the sufferings of the, especially the monolingual Chinese. Therefore, I'm here to be able to speak for them, to hear their problems. I'm running, well, some say that you're parental runner. And I just want you to hear what people really, people have to say, not what tailored comments or from, if you have a group of monolingual Chinese, they probably say the same thing. But since I'm bilingual, and I hear a lot of different stories, and I hear the different sufferings, because of that, you know, I've been hanging out at Portsmouth Square and really talking to them and organized them to play music and encouraged them to say, well, it's all right to do this culturally, although it's not really kosher to sing or play in front of people. But they gradually came out, and now they, you know, I'm sure that you probably have seen some of the musicians on Grant Avenue in Portsmouth Square. And it takes a long time. And also, not only that, the city has stringent fee schedules. You know, anybody who wants to use an amplifier, it's $60 regardless. And I have to fight city, every department, to say, to say, okay, you play, and then you let the seniors play. And now, they like to play it on the street, and cops say, wow, they do help business because tourists come in. And so, and I'm really happy to be able to speak on behalf of the monolingual and the seniors, the women of color, myself.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.[1481.13][1481.13](APPLAUSE).
So thank you to the league and the sponsoring organizations, Supervisor Christensen and Wilma Pang, and especially to all of you for coming and participating in this thing that we call democracy. I'm delighted that so many people are actually interested in the future of their district and their representation. And spread the word, November 3rd is the election, and hopefully we'll have large turnout. I hope that everybody in this district is engaged and thinking about these issues. As you know, I have eight years of proven leadership on the board. I was a tough negotiator. I stood up to powerful interests. And I think we need somebody right now at this juncture in time who is a big thinker and a visionary, bold leader. I appreciate the fact that there are parks that need to be fixed, and indeed, I worked to expand St. Mary's Park in Chinatown, created Sue Bierman Park on the waterfront, had the pleasure of working with Supervisor Christensen on Helen Wills Playground and on the North Beach Playground, the North Beach Pool. But there are bigger issues right now that I think require proven experience, that require somebody who is willing to be a check and balance, and who is a proven leader who listens and works with his colleagues. And why do I say that? Because I was elected unanimously two times by my 10 colleagues on the Board of Supervisors. I'm endorsed today by supervisors who were to the left of me and the right of me, be it Tom Amiano or Michaela Alioto-Peer, because I was able to bring people together, to find that space, to be a cauldron of innovation and ideas. And that is why I respectfully ask for your support in this November's election and ask that you come and volunteer on our campaign at 728 Filejo or at 1238 Sutter Street. Together, we'll prevail.[1606.51][1606.51](APPLAUSE).
So I have a 20-year history of working hard for this neighborhood and accomplishing what I set out to do. I've been able to bend the will of city government to create multimillion-dollar projects that this district needs. Now I'm a supervisor, and I'm working hard at City Hall to bend their will once again for the good of this district. I've been listening, and I've heard loud and clear, people are concerned about housing, about safety, about homelessness, about cleaning our streets. But people are also concerned about potholes and street lights and signal timing. And I've been focused on doing all those things because I don't want to be mayor, I don't want to be state senator, I don't want to go to battle with, you know, with politicians up the line. My goal is to be a very, very good supervisor for this district. I've been a constant person. The things that I support, I support. The answers that I give, I give no matter who asks the question or under what circumstance those questions are asked. And by cooperating, by working with people at City Hall, I've brought in 2.5 million extra dollars to our district. I've been able to stop Target from opening on Polk Street. I've been able to further the Central Subway. I've been able to add senior housing to the affordable housing on Broadway. One of the hardest things about doing this job has been having my reputation handed over to people that have tried to make me out something that I'm not. And what I am is determined and focused on the good of this district and the good of our city. What I am is a planner. I'm not a hammer. I'm not a bulldog, but I can get things done. And what I believe I have as an advantage is the ability to look into the future and to plan for what we need and to take those inexorable steps one by one to get us where we need to go as a community, as a district, and as a city. I've got the Democratic Party, Senator Feinstein, the Parent PAC, the Police Officers Organization, a long list of unions behind me. We just found out I got the Chronicle endorsement. I can do this job, and I will do this job with your help. Thank you.[1752.41][1752.41](APPLAUSE).
Ladies and gentlemen, you have some outstanding candidates for District III. Thank you all so much. Thank you. It's a pleasure to hear your-- Thank you for coming tonight. Don't forget to vote November 3rd. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I applaud you for coming tonight and being so gracious. Thanks, everybody. Drive safely.